That's been proposed before the Energies and Technologies Committee. This is, a lot of you guys have already seen this. This is the scorecard that I built. That if you scroll down, you'll see every single bill. I've given it a rating, right? A rating in terms of the quality of the bill and the likelihood of passing. And then an overall score based on a combination of those considerations, with a description for where those bills are, and with links for every single bill. And here we are with Senate Bill 647. We've got that on there. This is, you can see this in bold. This is the bill way at the top of the list. Not the absolute top, but right up there with the bills that we need to get behind. As I said in boldface, this is the bill. This bill does basically everything that the GOP laid out that's gonna, that's actually gonna have the effect of lowering rates. And like I said, there are links to all of this stuff. So if we go to Senate Bill, we can click on it or hover over it, and there's the link, and it's gonna bring you to the Senate Bills page. And this is the page. Now we see right here, we've got a public hearing set up. At first, it was just drafted, and you can see that there's two different bills here. There's the proposed bill and the committee bill. The proposed bill was the original bill that we've already been through. And the committee bill, which is much, much longer. And now that it's scheduled for a public hearing, you know, it's time to do the research, like I've said, and read things like the committee bill, which I actually did. Now, we can go to the original bill, the proposed bill, and we click on that, and you'll see the entire text of the proposed bill. It's only a paragraph long. "Being enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Assembly convened that the general statutes be amended to: (1) Remove charges collectively called 'the combined public benefits charge.' Item number one. Item number one. On that list, "From electric bills for end-use customers of each electric distribution company: (2) Prohibit the Commissioner of Energy and Environmental Protection, DEEP, or any electrical, electric distribution company from entering into a power purchase agreement that provides for the purchase of electricity at a rate exceeding 150% above the wholesale price of electricity." You'll get into what that means in just a minute. But in very short, this isn't really a price cap. This is a cap on the mandates for their purchases. It's effectively, it's a de facto erasure of a lot of the renewable portfolio standard that makes your electric bills incredibly expensive in the first place. (3) Redefine Class 1 Renewable Energy Source, which is part of the REX, as a subset of the RPS, to include any electricity generated from a hydropower or nuclear power generating facility, because there were exceptions that made it basically impossible to get to, to include a hydroelectric facility in, as a Class 1 renewable or nuclear. The cleanest, safest, most reliable in short and long term, and in the long term, cheapest source of electricity that man has ever endeavored into is not, is not considered a Class 1, 2, or 3 renewable. And what this would do is re-label it a Class 1 renewable. And like we said, 38% of the portfolio of EDCs has to, in the end, come from Class 1 renewables. These are ridiculously expensive sources, and right now, it's limited to, 38% has to come from renewable sources of some sort. And right now, the Class 1 variant of that, which is, I think, set to 30%, roughly 30%, I think it's 30.1. 30%, 30% of their portfolio, almost a third of the electricity we buy, is required to come from places like, things like solar and wind, which are orders of magnitude more expensive than things like natural gas and nuclear. And because nuclear isn't part of that, this, this stuff becomes incredibly expensive. This goes beyond just the one thing we care most about, which is the public benefits charges getting removed from our bills. This is the thing that's gonna actually reduce these bills on top of that. (2) And then (4) Separate the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, PURA, from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, DEEP, because there is an explicit conflict of interest. And that explicit conflict of interest is a huge part of, of why your electric bills are where they are, because PURA isn't disinterested when it comes to considerations beyond the demands of the consumer and the ratepayer. Because they're not disinterested, they become interested. This is where the conflict of interest exists. They have to serve these green energy plans that deep is cramming down their throat, which raises electrical rates and somehow also serves the ratepayer who wants lower electric rates. You can't do both simultaneously. Like they say in Casino, "You can get the hammer and the money, or you can walk out of here." You can't get both. (5) Eliminate any incentive program that increases electrical demand. We're gonna go through more detail what that means, but that should be self-explanatory, including, but not limited to, any electrical, electric vehicle rebate program. And (6) Study methods by which the supply of natural gas may be increased in this state, which is right now the cheapest form of electricity that can be delivered in the state of Connecticut. This is why we want this bill. All of these things, all of these things are things that are items that we talked about on the show that are going to reduce costs overall. And item number one, number one, is a removal of those, of the public benefits charges from your electric bill. Does the, in very short, does the actual proposed bill do all this? Now that we have the committee's language, the answer when it comes to 1 through 5 is yes. When it comes to 6, basically yes. The thing, and like I said, we can, we can go back to the original text, we can go back to the original Bills page, and we can click now on the committee bill. What we just went through was the proposed bill. It's a page and a little bit. It's a paragraph of text. It's like four sentences long. I'd love for bills to stay that length and to be that simple, but they're not. And unfortunately, what that means is we get stuck with a 28-page document. Or sorry, a 30-page document. You can see up here, 30 pages. And I was the one who did, did actually take the time to go through every single page and read and review the bill to understand it. So very briefly, we're gonna go through all this, but in short, the way that you read this, the way to read this is all of the, any, that you can't just say, when it comes to the bill, "This is what we want." You have to actually amend the Connecticut general statutes. If you want this thing to materialize and become, and for the bill, just like the bill sitting on Capitol Hill as we learned in Schoolhouse Rock. If you wanna see this bill become actual law and become a statute, you have to say how you're amending the statute, amending in this case being, meaning how it's being changed. And this is how you read these things, folks. I'm gonna teach you how to read these things. So, all of the text that's in brackets right here, that's being removed from the existing statutes. So, Section 16-245L of the general statutes is repealed, and the following is substituted in lieu thereof, effective July 1, 2025. So all of this stuff that says, "A, Public Utilities Regulatory Authority shall establish", that was already there, and that's gonna continue to be there. What was there was, "And each electric distribution company shall collect", so that, that's the stuff that's gonna disappear from the language. "A systems benefit charge", and then what's being added is stuff that's underlined, "which shall be paid on an annual basis by the treasurer from the general fund", and then all of this, because it's in brackets, is gone. So the first item, the first item, remember, the first item on the original proposed bill was eliminating the public benefits charges from your bill, which is the very first thing. "Be enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives in General Assembly convened, Section 1." "Section 16-245L of the general statutes is repealed, and the following is substituted in lieu thereof, effective 7/125." "A, The PURA shall establish", and then this is deleted, "a systems benefit charge, which shall be paid on an annual basis by the treasurer from the general fund, period." That means it's not on your electric bills. It is not on the EDCs to pass this on to you and me, the ratepayer. "The authority shall hold a hearing that shall be conducted as a contested case in accordance with Chapter 54 to establish the amount of the systems benefit charge", that's the public benefits charges. "The authority may revise the systems benefit charge or any element of said charges as the need arises." There it is. There it is in plain English. That's the thing that we want. Now, you're gonna hear, again, is more gaslighting from the proverbial other side. "All this is gonna do is shift it to the legislature where it's gonna come out of your tax bills." No, no. I told you, there was 41 items on there, and there's no feasible way, there's no feasible way of getting those 41 items, giving those 41 items the ax until they go before the legislative floor. And it brings daylight to these, to these charges, and it gives us, gives the legislator the opportunity to decide on them and debate among them, one at a time, each individually. And as a result, gives them the authority, the method, the actual tangible mechanism to get these things eliminated. None of them should be on your bill. But the only, the only feasible way of doing this is to first get it, get it onto the legislative floor so that the legislature can statutorily remove them, because that's the only way to do this. Right now, that this, right now, it's gonna be incredibly difficult from a statutory and legal standpoint to go through these on an itemized basis. By the way, I have those, so let me know in the comment section if you wanna see what those charges are. "It's esoterically obscure and very difficult to read. I can produce the link. I don't have time to go over it." Each individual one of these charges is something where you're gonna need a, one hell of a background to understand what those charges refer to and what they mean and what it actually means for you, and if these are things that can actually be removed just through the legislature. Some of them are federal mandates that we can't remove just from the state legislature. At least, at least not a state legislature that, you know, doesn't have huge watermelon-sized balls to tell the feds to shove it, which this legislature doesn't. This legislature, remember, is supermajority Democrat in both the House and Senate. So, like, the best we have, the best we can do right now is this bill. And again, the first item on the bill is getting rid of those public benefits charges from your bills. And at least getting them to the legislature, legislative floor, which is where they belong in the first place. If they're gonna be, if, if these charges, you know, these charges, which are just statutory mandates, if they're gonna be statutory mandates, they should be treated like statutory mandates and be debated by the legislature. This statutory body, the body that deals with the law, that body that deals with the creation of the law, so that first, first paragraph pulls off those public benefits charges. What about the caps of purchasing? Well, we have that on Page 8, right here in bold. Now, in between all of this is a bunch of clerical language to, to clean it up, right? So the meat, the actual meat of the bill that matters as far as removing the public benefits charges off of your electric bills, was that, was what we just went through. But there's also stuff in between there that, if you're gonna have that first part, you have to have all these other parts to kind of just do clerical changes to the bill and remove the parts that make reference to these charges as being part of what the EDCs are supposed to pass on to their customers. It basically just clerical changes. In the meantime, the second thing, the caps that we talked about, Item D, "No agreement may be entered into pursuant to this subdivision", this is the underlined stuff, so it's brand new. "If such agreement would be required, would require the purchase of electricity at a rate exceeding 150% above the wholesale price of electricity at the time of such agreement." Now, we can see, we can see the context that this is under. "Subdivision 1 of subsection E of 16A-3M of the general statutes is repealed, and the following is substituted in lieu thereof." Remember, the stuff that's not underlined, you're in brackets, excuse me, was already there and is gonna remain there. 1, E1, "Any solicitation issued pursuant to subsection D of this section for zero-carbon electricity generating resources", so these are your REX, "including but not limited to eligible nuclear power generating facilities", which is none right now, "hydropower, Class 1 renewable energy sources as defined in Section 16-1 as amended by this act", which we'll get into, because the act did amend that, "and energy storage systems shall be for resources delivered into the control area of the regional independent system operator." Now, what that means is, is this is, this is the teeth of the renewable portfolio standard from a statutory standpoint. This is the legislation. This is the teeth behind all of that. And by having this amendment, because the renewable portfolio standard makes you buy things, makes you buy electricity at a rate exceeding 150% above the wholesale price of electricity at the time of such agreement, by having this amendment, you've pulled the teeth out of the renewable portfolio standard. You've pulled the teeth out of the REX mandates. This is a good thing. This is probably, we're probably, we're not going to get a repeal of our, of the RPS and the REX mandates, but we can take the teeth out of them. And we can have, have de facto repealing by taking, by making these things toothless, by making it so that the renewable portfolio standard and the REX mandates are meaningless. What about hydroelectric and nuclear power? We talked about this a lot on the show. Why is nuclear, why is nuclear electricity not a Class 1 renewable? Well, does the bill actually, when it comes to the text, text take care of that? Here we do, here we have on Page, uh, this is Page 8, at the bottom of Page 8. You can see the updated text gets rid of the condition of a run-of-the-river hydroelectric facility. Where, what's this in? "A Class 1 Renewable Energy Source Means", and then we can itemize all of this. 10, "A run-of-the-river hydroelectric power facility", well, we've gotten rid of the run-of-the-river qualification. A run-of-the-river, the qualification of run-of-the-river, by the way, means that there's no backup behind it. There's no storage of water behind the dam. Well, what dam in America is a run-of-the-river dam? That's not just some guy's backyard dam where he's damming up a stream in his backyard and using just the downward thrust of the stream of, of that little tiny brook to, to do some sort of like engineering project with his, you know, high school or middle school son, you know, to demonstrate the power of, of hydroelectric facilities. So, on Reddit right now, this gaslight is taking place. Hydroelectric, unqualified hydroelectric generation was never on the schedule. It was not a Schedule 1 renewable. It was not a Class 1 renewable. Excuse me. Because it was this condition of run-of-the-river. And there was also all of these other conditions you can see here that began operation after, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And all of these considerations are now gone. If it is a hydroelectric power facility at all, at all, if gravity and water are the way that you're generating electricity, or the way you're spinning the turbine, it now qualifies as a schedule, as a Class 1 renewable. And for the record, all of those conditions, all of those qualifiers that I mentioned, that were in the original text, disqualify almost every single hydroelectric facility in Connecticut. Almost every single one. It disqualify, and it includes the three largest dams, the three largest, excuse me, hydroelectric facilities in Connecticut, the Shippensburg Dam, the Stevenson Dam, and the Rocky River Generation Facility. That's for Candywood Lake, which, by the way, accounts for over two-thirds of all electrical generation through hydropower in Connecticut. This, this disqualified from the renewable portfolio standard and the REX mandates that we've been talking about endlessly on this show, disqualified virtually all of the hydroelectric electricity generated in Connecticut. And you cannot get a more renewable source of electricity than hydroelectric. You can't do it. There's, there's nothing that better fits that definition than water, gravity. And I don't know how you can say that there's a limit to the amount of gravity that we're gonna be dealing with. And it doesn't have to technically be water. It could be any liquid. So, like, is there a physics limit to the total quantity of liquids that can be produced in the universe? The answer is obviously no. Obviously no. We can take ice and we can melt it and make water. We have oil, which is a liquid. Mercury will flow at room temperature as a liquid. We have a million different things that function as liquids. Hydrocarbons of all kinds, including synthetic hydrocarbons, that we can make in a laboratory, including plant runoffs, right? We can synthetically engineer corn syrup from, from sources that don't really contain the saccharides you would need for, for regular syrup, for a regular syrup solution. But how about when it comes to, to the nuclear side of everything? Well, just past that, here, let me make sure I have the right page here. So the, so the section we were on, when it comes to redefining Class 1 renewables, this had a carve-out for nuclear. Excuse me, let me, let me get this. I didn't have the, the highlighted part already taken care of. Uh, "We want this." Here we go. Well, I'm gonna waste too much time because I made the mistake of not highlighting this and making it easy for me to find. But yes, nuclear is in there. There's a carve-out for nuclear. Okay, here we go. On the very next page, "A nuclear power generating facility", so Class 1 renewable is now going to include a nuclear power generating facility, period. "Previously, it was constructed on or after October 1, 2023." Where is that facility? Where is that facility and where is it ever going to be? Let's be honest here. Let's not, let's not treat this with bad faith. We're gonna get into greater detail as to why, why it is that this is just never going to materialize. But this disqualified the largest power generation source in all of Connecticut, and I think it's the second-largest generating source in all of New England, which is the Millstone Plant in Stoning, Connecticut. Five cents a kilowatt hour was the, was the deal that we, that we arranged. And you can't use that towards your, your REX requirements because it wasn't constructed on or after October 1, 2023. That requirement has been removed. Now it's just all nuclear, unqualified. So, so far, we've covered everything that was in the original version of that bill. The next item was separating PURA from DEEP. That happened on Page 10. Make sure I'm on Page 10. Here we go. On Page 10, "There shall be, there shall continue to be a Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, PURA", and then we've gotten rid of the text, "within the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, DEEP", "which the authority shall have the following functions, duties, and powers." So all of this is new. However, these aren't the actual, there's no change into their functions, duties, and powers. They're now just listed as a matter of statute and not listed as a matter of agency under the, under DEEP. And we talked about the conflict of interest. "The authority shall be responsible for all matters of rate regulation for public utilities and regulated entities under Title 16, and shall promote policies that will lead to just and reasonable utility rates." You see that conflict of interest? DEEP has, has an interest in environmental protection, which could very well be interpreted to mean forcing people to buy electricity through generation rates that are significantly more expensive than just and reasonable utility rates. Significantly higher in terms of price than the market rate. "The authority shall employ and assign such personnel as the chairperson of the authority deems necessary for the performance of the authority's functions and duties." So now, all of their personnel is answering to PURA as a matter of statute and not as a matter of agency under DEEP. All of this text, I'll just finish this off. "The authority shall perform such management functions as the chairperson of the authority deems necessary, including, but not limited to, purchasing, accounting, and payroll functions." So PURA is now a purely statutory body. It is not a subdivision of some form of agency. There is no element of it that now answers, that, that with this bill, with this bill would answer to DEEP, and that entire thing would be cleared up. Now, there is a lot, a lot of pages of clerical changes that were made to get this to make, to come through. So there's a lot of pages after this where all of these changes, clerical amendments and textual amendments had to take place. The fifth thing on that list that we talked about was, was getting rid, putting the kibosh, if you will, on requirements, on things that would, that would force the, that would artificially increase electrical demand. So that's, that's throughout, but what I can do is I can bring up at least one item. So within this bill, that is kind of scattered throughout the bill, but on Page 19, "Notwithstanding the provisions of this section or Section 16-244I, the authority shall not establish any program that requires or provides incentives for the installation of any electric vehicle charging station." There we have it. There we have it. The original, the original proposed bill, like I said, explicitly stated, "No more freebies, no more handouts, no more of our money going towards somebody else's project, towards somebody else's investment." You wanna, you wanna have, you wanna, as I said in Aladdin, "You wanna be a genie, you got it", and everything that goes with it. You wanna have, have, you wanna get an EV and put an EV charging station in your home? Go ahead and at your dime, not mine. That's your decision. That's your decision, so that should be on you to, to take care of that decision. You make that decision. You make that expense. You make your bed. You lay in it. And that's just one of the items. I just highlighted that one because it's scattered throughout the entire bill. And how about the study of natural gas? Well, we find that on Page 18. Let me scroll up so we can get this lined up correctly. "The Commissioner of Energy and Environmental Protection, Commissioner of DEEP, shall study natural gas capacity in the state. Such studies shall include, but need not be limited to: (1) An evaluation of natural gas capacity in the state, and (2) An examination of ways to expand natural gas capacity, including importing natural gas into the state, but probably from another state, and any necessary regulatory legislative changes." There's gonna be a lot. "Not later than January 1, 2026, the commissioner shall submit a report in accordance with the provisions of Section 11-4A of the general statutes on the commissioner's findings and recommendations to the Joint Standing Committee of the General Assembly having cognizance of matters relating to energy and technology." Now, you know, I've already said what I feel about studies. I know what the study's gonna say. It's Connecticut, it's gonna be populated by people who come in with a certain motivation. We know what that is. With preconceived notions of what they ought to be doing and, you know, who have basically already decided what the conclusion of this report's gonna be. We know what it's gonna say. Well, we paid a whole bunch of money for this report to tell us things that we, A, already know, and B, a whole bunch of gaslighting about how we can't get natural gas into this state. Or that it would somehow be ludicrously expensive to do so when we already have a pipeline running right through my town. In fact, that's about 100 feet away from my office right now. The Iroquois Pipeline runs right through Western Connecticut, right through New Milford. And in fact, I'm directly across the river from the loading station that Kimberly Clark uses to get natural gas out of that pipeline, onto railcars, and then into their facilities. And that's why they have the power station where they do it, Kimberly Clark and New Milford. Because, because it's directly over the Iroquois Line. And they could very, very easily get from the Iroquois Line to their building, and that's what they did back in, I think it was 2000, 2001. They took the tiny little power generation facility they had that was effectively a backup and a supplemental supply, and just expanded it into a, into a full-blown power plant the size of a very, very, very large house. The, the actual generation, um, the actual generation equipment, right? So there's not much to house it because it's just an attached, attachment to the side of the building. But the actual building, the actual combustion chambers and the boilers are the size of a giant house. This is a huge output facility. And they're able to do it because the Iroquois Line, again, runs right through New Milford. So before, again, the left gaslights you and say that nobody wants to, to, to get natural gas through their state. Okay, then there's boats we could use, there's trains we could use, there are trucks we could use. How do we make this happen? How do we get a facility? And there's a reason we want these facilities in the state. And that's because we, if we have the, a ton of these facilities in our state, we're not gonna get handcuffed to, till Millstone, when Millstone says, you know, "The feds came to us, and they say we gotta make all of these capital improvements in order to remain in compliance with federal guidelines, and we don't have the money to do that." And the banks that are gonna be securing loans to get us so that we have the money to do these sort of things wanna, want an absolute guarantee of certain revenue, which we can't give them, so gives us the money. And if you don't give us the money and buy our electricity, then we're out of Connecticut, and best of luck with your rolling brownouts like California already has because of exactly these problems and because of exactly this, this type of regulatory environment. So, again, I know, we all know what the study's gonna say. So I, I'm skeptic, I'm a giant skeptic on the study itself, but it's the first tiny little step. It's a close, it's, we're not likely right now going to have the political will in a Democrat supermajority House and Senate in Connecticut, in Hartford, to just up and get natural gas in the state. But we can try to build a presentation that might convince one or two of them to get on board, or at least to convince the normies to get on board with this and stop electing people who oppose your wallet. Stop electing people who oppose you having to live like you're in a third-world country with your heat set to 50 degrees and with, and with illegal burning of god knows what kind of garbage that takes place in a lot of places so that you can heat your home. You shouldn't have to, in the dead of winter in Connecticut, when it's 30 degrees out, be living like some homeless person in your home. You shouldn't have to do that. And the crazy thing is that when we go over all these electric bills, New Hampshire doesn't have to do this. New Hampshire's electric rates are way lower than what Connecticut's rates are. So if you wanna see these electric rates come down, it is purely a matter of regulatory environment. It is purely a statutory matter. If you wanna see these electric bills go down, this is the actual way to do it. This is the thing that's gonna make that happen. And the public hearing is the most important step in the committee process that brings this bill before the legislature, which, you know, the committee is everything. The committee is everything. We, we, we had, we've, we've had Senate Minority Leader, Steve Harding, on this show several times now. It's a good friend of mine. Have his phone number. Hopefully, hoping to have him on later on this, this week. We'll see how things go. He came on my show, we've already, we've shown this clip a few times, but in very, I'll show you the very briefest version of this clip. He's told us that once He's told us that once things, once a bill comes out out of committee, that's it, it's done, it passes. It passes. So the whole thing is on is the committee. We've got to get this through committee and this is the first step. Here's Steve Harding telling us exactly how the committee, exactly how important the committee process is.
Generally, how the House and the Senate work is almost nothing gets brought out to the floor of the chamber unless they know it's going to pass.
Okay.
So usually it's not like, ah, this bill, this person wants a vote on it, they throw it up and it and it doesn't pass. But bill comes out, I don't, I think I've only seen one time where a bill has actually come out and actually failed on the House floor or the Senate floor.
Interesting.
So it does, so the leadership in the House and the Senate do not bring a bill out unless they know there's, they have the votes for the bill.
So when it comes to the committee process, the actual testimony that's provided at public hearings, especially in person, and at least especially verbally, is the most important part of the process. Billy Mo Buckby told me this in private, I don't think this is some big secret, but he's told me that this is the important part, is the public hearing and the provision of this testimony. And you can, and for for those who are wondering, yes, we have an agenda out. Let me get that pulled up real quick for everybody. We have the agenda. For all of this stuff, by the way, if if anyone wants to, let me know. I'll and I'll put these links in the comments. If you want these links, oh, let me get rid of this real quick. If you guys want these links, I'll put these links in the comments and in the comments of these videos so you guys can easily follow these, find these things. But we have the agenda. Bills for review, Senate Bill 4, and there it is, Senate Bill number 647, enact according protections for consumer access to affordable electricity. So we have the agenda. And on that agenda is a link so that you can register to provide testimony in person or via Zoom. So you don't actually have to go to the legislative office building, you could do this from your phone. You know, you could do this from the backseat of a cab, from a taxi cab, if you have good enough service. But you do have to register in person and that link is in the agenda. It's. You can register to speak right up here, that's part of the agenda. You see where the, I'll highlight this, I'll try to highlight it. Anyway, it's a link at the top. And wow, okay, so apparently that brings it, there we go. So this is, this is the form you're going to have to fill out. And at the very bottom, you can, there's radio button for either providing testimony remotely, which would be via Zoom or in person. And they will provide the Zoom link probably the day of for something this important, they are probably going to wait until the absolute last minute to get the Zoom link out. So if you're going to do this, pay attention. Pay attention. I will do my best to get the link out. I'm not going to post it publicly because it's Zoom. And if we public, post it publicly, so don't post it publicly. Then there are, there are bots out in the ether that are looking for Zoom links and are looking to raid meetings like this. And that's going to be the most, most counterproductive thing possible. So don't share this link publicly. You want to text it to one of your friends, text it to one of your friends. If you've got some private, secure Discord server like I have and like you guys should join, link is in the comments and in this video's description. I will be sharing that link there when I get my hands on it. Although I don't know if I'll be able to get my hands on it. I will be talking to Billy Mo Buckby tomorrow in terms of strategy for how to go about this. But there is also a way to provide testimony by simply writing your testimony in. Again, that link is also on the agenda. And you can provide your first name, last name, you can, you have to remember to type the bill. You have to remember to type in the bill and let them know what bill you're speaking toward. And it is Senate Bill 647. You can upload a file or you can type in your testimony. This allows you to provide testimony with no limitations. Because what, fair warning to those who are going to be providing verbal testimony. This is the best and most effective testimony, however, three minute time limit. Now, a member of the committee may ask you a question. And if they ask you a question, then you have essentially infinite time to answer that question. So again, Billy and I will probably be strategizing how to go, the best way to go about all of that. This is why you should be writing to your representatives, by the way, on that committee. Because if you write to them and say, I want to speak towards this, could you please, I have this knowledge base, I can't get through everything in three minutes, here's what I would like to say. And then you basically, by implication, get them to ask you questions in the lead up to this. This is why we've been doing these letter writing campaigns, stuff like this. Stuff like this. Now, right now, there is, let's see, let me get it, let me make sure I have this, there is already some written testimony that's been provided. We have three people that have, or six people, excuse me, that have sent in testimony. All of it so far has been in support of the bill. I know this one says opposes, but all six of these people, if you actually read their testimony, all six of them have provided testimony that is in support of this bill. What I want to see from you guys, and I will share this link in the comment section if this is what it takes, let me know. What I want to see from you guys is, I want to see you guys blowing up this page. I want this page right here to just be something where I'm scrolling endlessly. So this is what I'm going to get on you guys to do. I may even clip this section of the video. Right? So Mike, in edit, Mike, in the future, right? Maybe clip out this, cut out this part of this clip where I'm discussing how I'm going to edit this in, and I'm going to create this clip. But the run and short of it, the long and short of it is, this is what you guys, we you can all do, you all can take 10 minutes of your time and write four sentences. Just write four sentences. It doesn't have to be in word. They gave you a place where you can just provide your testimony and type it in, four sentences, it's all it take. Picks, pick one of those six items and say why you like those six, one of those six items. Tell them why you think nuclear should be, should be a class one renewable. Tell them why you think that the that the limitations on on hydroelectric for class one, classic designation are ridiculous. Tell them how much you want the public benefits charges off your electric bills. Even if it's only to temporarily move them to the legislative floor and something that we're going to have to at least temporarily eat through taxation. Tell them how much, how much, how much you guys are hurting and how badly we need to get much cheaper electricity in the state, including natural gas. Tell them how much it's ridiculous that we couldn't tell Millstone to go pound to to best of luck years ago. Tell them how much you think the renewable portfolio standard is ridiculous. And how if if we had an actual market for electricity in the state, we could have told Millstone years ago, tough luck, pound sand, we'll just have a dozen natural gas plants fired up in the next 12 months and we'll be fine. And we'll be fine. And we'll have three cents a kilowatt hour electricity instead of five. We'll get a 40% reduction in the electricity that we're buying from Millstone by having all of these natural gas plants instead. You flood the market with supply, price goes down. This is element, this is middle school level economics. So if you want the public benefits charges gone, then write in or show up either via Zoom or in person. And in fact, when it comes to talk, writing about these, I'm going to get more advice from Billy Mo Buckby to tomorrow to find out what exactly works when it comes to the written testimony. But again, I'll provide a link in the comments in this, and it's already in this video's description, I'm pretty sure it's still in this video's description. This is a style guide I put together for writing to to your, your state centers and your state reps. And yeah, it's pretty comprehensive. And we've gone through this and we actually wrote a letter based on the style guide on this channel. So check out that style guide. It's basically, all of the the rules that are in the style guide are going to apply to providing written testimony. Short, sweet, to the point. When it comes to written testimony, when it comes to the public hearing and not just writing to your, to your. To your state reps and state senators. Yes, if there is something personal included in it, but it's a sentence or two. It's a sentence or two, that's all it takes. And for those that are going to be showing up in person, I'm going to be there, I, my intention is to show up in person, I'm going to talk to Billy. If he thinks that it's going to be better based on how I have the ability to present things for me to do it via Zoom, because I can do things like share screen without even the authority to share screen, because I have the broadcasting software and the hardware that I have to make that happen. If he seems to think that it's better for me to not show up in person and instead to show up via Zoom because of what Zoom offers in terms of technology, then I'll do that. But my intention right now is to show up in person. For those who are going to be showing up in person, for those who are going to be, you know, calling in through Zoom, there's going to be a lot of sitting around. And for the record, yes, you will have to name the bill even in person and even if you're going to be calling in. Yes, you're going to have, in written testimony, they they demand in that form that you name the bill. But when you, when you take, get to the podium. Hi, Mike Sinello, New Milford, Connecticut, here to speak in favor of Senate Bill 647. They want you to know right away if you're in favor or if you're opposed. And it is in favor. Right now, we are supporting Senate Bill 647, we're not opposing it, we're supporting Senate Bill 647. We are in favor of Senate Bill 647. But there are other bills on the agenda and that's why we got to name the bill. And if we go back to our agenda. We can see that there are some other bills on here. If we zoom in, we, you guys can see this a little bit better. So these are raised bills, these are bills where they're coming directly from the committee itself and haven't been brought before the committee. So I have not had time to review these, sorry folks. But I have had time, of course, to review Senate Bill number four. In fact, the proposed bill was one sentence and I wrote about it in January. This is, for crying out loud, nice job, Facebook. Nice job, Facebook, making me look ridiculous. Here we go. The entire text of this utterly, uselessly vague bill, Senate Bill 4, quote, be enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Assembly convened that the general statutes be amended to provide for improved service and reduce costs for electricity for ratepayers in the state. They might as well have proposed a bill that just said the General Assembly should do good stuff. True, I agree with me. So we've already been through this. This bill is worthless. We, I even gave it a rating on on my scorecard. There it is at, on my scorecard, quality score minus one because it's uselessly vague and we don't know what it means. And the likelihood of passing on these uselessly vague bills is an eight. And that means it's pretty high. And the reason it's likely to pass is because it has, it was introduced by, these are the main sponsors of the bill. All, every single Democrat Senate Senator in Hartford except one. This is the bill. It's a single digit bill. This is the bill that Democrats are are going to try to push through. And remember, they have a super majority. So this is probably going to materialize. And like I said before, it was, that the proposed bill. When I wrote about this in January, was a single sentence that was just vague and useless. But we also know that it's, there's not one Senator, one Republican, Senator or Rep. That's a sponsor on this bill or that was at least part of the membership of introducing this bill. And that should tell you basically where this is going. Now, I built, I built my scorecard with the principle of charity and keeping with good faith. Now, if I was going to be, if I was going to be, if I was going to be a little bit more honest, I don't think I can extend good faith and this is probably going to be an atrocious bill. But we actually have the language of the bill now because it's gone before committee. And we can read the actual committee text. And here it is. Let me zoom in real quick. Section 1, section 22A dash 136 of general statutes is repealed and the following is substituted in lieu thereof, effective October 1st. This is the new language. This was not there before, as used in the section 1. Advanced nuclear reactor has the same meaning as provided by USC 1621, 16271, as amended from time to time. And two, high level nuclear waste, which is not federally defined, so they're making up a definition right now, means those aqueous wastes resulting from the operation of the first cycle of the solvent extraction system or equivalent and the concentrated waste of subsequent extraction cycles or equivalent in a facility for for processing irradiated reactor fuel and includes spent fuel assemblies prior to fuel processing. Okay, so what we've done is just to find every single reactor, every single form of nuclear, the base, basically every single form of nuclear that there is. And then the very next, the very next paragraph, the very next item, B, let's zoom in so you guys can see this clearly. No construction, Sal commence on a, remember, this has been removed, new nuclear power facility in the state unless, and here come the qualifications. The Commissioner of Deep finds that the US government through its authorized agency has identified and approved a demonstrable, whatever that means, technology or means for the disposal of high level nuclear waste. Then there were all of these exceptions, removed. Removed. Two, the nuclear power facility is proposed to be cited on a nuclear power generating facility operating in this state as of October 1st, 2022, or so that disqualifies all of them. The construction is for an advanced nuclear reactor facility and A, such facility is cited in a municipal, in a municipality that has consented to such facilities. These are private sector transactions. They are, all of the towns have, already have a zoning body, all of them already have a plan of conservation and development. This supersedes that. And forces towns to have extremely expensive, in a likelihood, referendum processes to decide if the private sector should be allowed to do what the private sector wants to do with their own property. And then it's just a, it's just pages of new text. Section 2, new, which means that this entire section is new. There's, there's no underlines here because the whole thing is new. And all of these things, all this, these, these entire first several pages. Are about making it essentially impossible to install a new nuclear facility in Connecticut. And not only a new nuclear facility, but an expand, an expansion of an existing facility by having some sort of like advanced nuclear reactor that's added to the facility. And by the way, this originates in the first paragraph, which effectively puts the kibosh on nuclear in this state. The safest, cleanest, most reliable and long term cheapest source of energy there is, and that's not just according to me, that's according to Biden's, Joe Biden's Department of of Energy. Three reasons why nuclear is clean and sustainable, March 31st, 2021. Who was in office in March 31st, 2021? When you hear the words clean energy, what comes to mind? Most people immediately think of solar plant panels or wind turbines. But how many of you thought of nuclear energy? Nuclear is often left out of the clean energy conversation despite it being the second largest source of low carbon energy in the electricity in the world behind hydropower. And you can only dam the rivers, so many rivers, so many times. You can only install so many dams until you lose change in elevation. Once you eliminate all of that change in elevation, there's no more river to dam. That's, that's how it works. So just how clean and sustainable is nuclear? Try these quick facts for starters. One, nuclear energy protects air quality. Nuclear energy protects air quality according to Joe Biden's Federal Department of Energy. Nuclear is a zero emission clean energy source. It generates power through fission, which is the process of splitting uranium atoms to produce energy and not always. We're going to get into that in just a minute. The heat released by fission is used to create steam that's been to turbine to generate electricity without the harmful byproducts emitted by fossil fuels. So again, we have the language of the left here. We have the, without the harmful byproducts emitted by fossil fuels. According to the Nuclear Energy Institute, the United States avoided more than 471 million metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions in 2020. This is why I call nuclear a litmus test. If you really are serious about, you know, green, about lowering CO2 rates, if you're really serious about some sort of Bill Nye the Science Guy, the anti-science guy, you know, obvious hyperbole about the world being actually and literally on fire and being actual Venus tomorrow morning. Or right now, as Bill Nye the Science Guy once said, literally, and then double down when questioned on his use of the word literally, literally, double down on it. This is according to Joe Biden's Department, Department of Energy. This is why this is a litmus test. Either you're serious about CO2 and you are wholeheartedly in favor of nuclear or you're not. Or you're not. This is the litmus test. Either this is a good faith attempt to lower CO2 emissions or it's not. Or there's some other thing that this is serving. A purely ideological end would be one of those other things. For the record. And for those of you who don't trust Biden and don't trust the Federal Department of Energy, fine. This is actually a better source anyways. We can go to the Macanac Institute. And look at their energy report card from 2024. So as up to date as we're going to get, nuclear, 88% grade B plus. By the way, this is the second highest grade that they get, they offered. Nuclear energy represents a best of all worlds energy resource for the United States. This is on page 10. Given its history as the nation's safest and most reliable electricity source and its ability to produce near endless amounts of completely reliable and emission free ability to produce near endless amounts of completely reliable and emission-free electricity, nuclear is an obvious choice, especially given the nation's current hyper-focus on net-zero carbon dioxide emissions." Is it a national emergency or not? Is it this cataclysmic event, carbon, climate change? Is it the natural disaster of our lifetimes, or is it not? Are you honest, or are you not? This is the litmus test. For those of you who wanna see this study, happy to provide a link in the comments, on page 18 of the study. We actually see why it is, by the way, that CO2 emissions have plummeted off, greenhouse gas emissions broadly have plummeted over the last, well, this is from 2011 to 2022. When it comes to the generation of electricity, and that yellow line, so people, because you probably can't read it, is natural gas. The blue line is coal. We're replacing coal with natural gas. That's how we're able to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Everything else is basically flat. Hydroelectric is slightly down, renewables excluding solar are slightly up. Solar is even more slightly, as in like even shallower of a curve, slightly up, all offset by the decline in hydroelectric. Whatever gains we made in solar, we lost in hydroelectric, which is even cleaner, which is even more environmentally, which even fewer greenhouse gases per megawatt produced. So there you have it, folks. The solution for greenhouse gases is modern natural gas generation. Modern natural gas generation, that's how you do it. Beyond nuclear, that's the real solution here is modern natural gas, because modern natural gas has CO2 recapture, which means that in the end, those plants produce, release zero CO2 into the environment. It's all water vapor, because they all have, all of the modern plants have CO2 recapture. So yeah, if you wanna see that study, I will happily put the link to that study in the comment section of this video. Senate Bill Four makes nukes essentially impossible to install. And that, like I said, includes onsite expansion at Millstone. What's it do instead? "For the purposes described in Section B of this section, the State Bond Commission shall have the power from time to time to authorize the issuance of bonds, so more of your money of the state in one or more series, and in principle now it's not exceeding the aggregate million dollars, something X number of million dollars, which they're gonna fill in later." Of course they are. So that they can act as a point of contact for public and private stakeholders, which is a red flag, "to assist in compliance with federal, state, and local requirements relevant to atomic development, including but not limited to citing considerations and permitting requirements." We can go to the other atomic requirements. "The Commissioner of Energy and Environmental Protection shall coordinate all atomic development activities in the state." Yeah, so we're just gonna make it incredibly hard to put in nuclear. And what are we doing instead? Well, we're gonna get grant money. And we're gonna get grant money, like I said, to spend, this is what the grant money is actually gonna go to. "The authorities shall structure the utility-scale renewable thermal energy network program in the best interest of ratepayers of public service companies defined in Section 16-1 of the General Statutes." So are we talking about geothermal? Are we talking about geothermal? Geothermal in Connecticut? So we're gonna, we're gonna spend more of your taxpayer monies. We're gonna make nuclear basically impossible. And the bond funds are gonna go towards things like essentially mandating geothermal, on page 17, in Connecticut. So we can't drill for natural gas, but we can drill 100 times further to hit magma. I mean, unless this is all just a gaslight for mandating heat pumps, by another name, which, by the way, heat pumps, what they do is they just recycle air. They move around air. And there's always a net cost of doing so, which of course there is. If we actually go back to the definitions from this chapter. Utility-scale renewable, for crying out loud. For crying out loud. Again, this wouldn't be an episode of the Mike Sinello Show without technical difficulties. And well, in short, it is. It is. It's just a gaslight to cover for mandating, I gotta be, I gotta be able to get this page. For mandating heat pumps in the home. And what does it sound like? Well, it sounds like, to me, House Bills 5934, 5927, and 5948, which we've talked about on this channel, which you can see on my scorecard. I actually read the bills. I actually know where it comes from. I really wanna pull this up so you guys can actually see it. Here we go. Here it is. "Utility-scale renewable thermals," for some reason, for some reason Adobe just reset. So I just completely lost the document. "Utility-scale renewable thermal energy network means distribution infrastructure A, established for the purpose of providing thermal energy for space heating and cooling, domestic hot-water production, refrigeration, thermal energy storage, or commercial and industrial processing requiring heating or cooling, and B, implemented through interconnections between one or more renewable thermal energy sources, which may be owned by multiple parties, and between these resources and heat pumps, and heat pumps, there it is, in multiple buildings owned by multiple parties. Renewable thermal energy means A, ambient heating or cooling provided, absorbed, or stored by geothermal well boreholes, which means geysers, right? We're gonna drill and find magma, or other non-combusting, non-fossil fuel-consuming, non-nuclear thermal sources. Or B, thermal energy otherwise lost to the atmosphere or other environmental compartment as waste heat." So these are just heat pumps. Because no, we are not digging. We are not digging thousands of feet down to try to find magma underneath Connecticut. By the way, this is part of the gaslight that you're gonna get. Because geothermal energy, where you have high levels of volcanic activity. So that would be like Italy, that would be like Iceland, that would be like the Great Rift nations of Eastern Africa, that would be like Indonesia. This is where these geothermal sites are. And that electricity is really, really cheap, because they have magma exploding out of the ground everywhere. We're in the middle of a gigantic tectonic plate. There is virtually no tectonic activity happening in Connecticut. So no, this is just a gaslight for, like I said, heat pumps, which we all know where this is gonna go. We all know where this is gonna go. And that's part of those House Bills. The most ridiculous of which, of those three that I mentioned, being House Bill 5948. "Be enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Assembly convened that the General Statutes be amended to require the Commissioner of DEEP to establish a program to increase the rate at which electrical resistance water heaters are replaced with heat pump water heaters." So we're forcing an increase in that replacement rate. What does that mean? That means mandates. That means mandating on people, mandating on people. Heat pumps, which don't work, because remember, they require electricity to pump. All they're doing is just recycling air. That's what they're doing. They're just an air handler. And hello, renters, anyone? I mean, I have a hot-water heater, and it's an electric hot-water heater. It's an electric induction hot-water heater. Plain old-fashioned water, hot-water heater. Do you think I can afford this, this sort of capital cost? What do you think's gonna happen to my rent when that, when my landlord is forced to do this? Does anyone care about the common man here? Well, Billy Mo Buckey does, and that's why he spoke out about these types of measures.
The other part of this that's never really heard in that same discussion is there's so many people, especially in the renters area of the spectrum, these people are renting, they don't have the opportunity to invest in a heat pump or whatever for their home. And they're all paying for it already. We're pushing this down a lot of people's throats that can't afford to do it. And I understand the comment of making things more efficient, but not everyone has that control over what's efficient when they're paying their energy bill. I think this is, really, the buck has to stop somewhere. And I think this is such a difficult piece to look at. The three-legged stool is really long on one side, and it's costing people a lot of money and they can't afford to do it anymore. And that's the number-one thing that I've heard. So for that reason, I'll be voting no on this today. I'm sure it will pass through and we'll have that vigorous debate more so on it. But I think it's, that three-legged stool is way out of whack, and this is just extending that one leg. Thank you.
So Senate Bill Four, what it's gonna do is it's gonna embed deep into the statutes as the regulatory body, so that the question of PURA becomes an irrelevant one on this subject. This is, by the way, this is what we're talking about with the control of atomic energy in this state. It just circumvents the entire purpose for having PURA and embeds deep into these regulatory We're gonna be spending more money on bonding for freebies and handouts to these green energy movement stuff. All these things, all these handouts that are part of the political charges that we all hate. All of these mandates that make supply and delivery in the state incredibly expensive and generation in the state incredibly expensive. We're gonna be funding things like, I gotta bring this up, like geothermal energy in Connecticut and mandating heat pumps. And what's that bonding going to? What is the principal proceeds? "The proceeds of the sale of such bonds shall be used by the Department by DEEP for the purpose of funding grants or loan through the Advanced Nuclear Reactor and Offshore Wind Facility Site Readiness Funding Program, established pursuant to Section Two." Wait, offshore wind? We're gonna be subsidizing offshore wind? As part of your electric bills, you are now, you, if this passes, are gonna be subsidizing offshore wind. And that's part of Section Two. Section Two, this is on page three. "The Commissioner of DEEP shall establish a competitive advanced nuclear reactor and offshore wind site." Pork. This is pork. Readiness Funding Program, which is that bonding that we talked about. "The Commissioner may provide funding through the program in the form of grants or loans to eligible recipients in support of environmental and technical studies required for early site permitting advanced..." Yeah, okay, we all know where this is going. So we're gonna be, you are then, Senate Bill's gonna force you to fund things. We know, we know how this is. We're gonna make, we're gonna make new nuclear impossible to bring into the state. But we're also gonna be studying ways to bring in nuclear into the state, which is simultaneously making it impossible. And we're also gonna be studying and looking into how we're gonna bring offshore wind into the state and providing grant funding for these programs. So what does that mean? That means we're providing grants for offshore wind, the single most expensive way to generate electricity known to man. Your tax dollars are gonna be funding these projects. This bill, again, spends your money on incredibly expensive electricity. It makes, it makes nuclear effectively, new nuclear at least, effectively impossible to install in this state. It's gonna, we know what's gonna happen. There's gonna be cramdowns and incentive programs that we talked about for things that cost you money, that in the end, aren't gonna save anyone any money, like like heat pumps, that I simply can't afford and that you guys know can't afford. And you know what the response is gonna be to that? Well, then we'll just set up a fund and cost the taxpayers even more money. And in fact, we're not gonna dump it on the taxpayers, we're gonna dump it on other ratepayers. You thought your rates were bad now? You thought, you thought that us having the second-highest rates in continental US was bad? At 29.93 cents a kilowatt, a megawatt? Or sorry, kilowatt-hour, excuse me? By the way, as far as the gaslighting is considered, since we have this chart up, the other gaslight that you're gonna hear is that, oh, it's because we're in New England. Well, here's New Hampshire at 22.86 cents for kilowatt-hour. They are, they are one of our fellow New England states, and they're more than seven cents a kilowatt-hour less than us on average. They are a colder state, a famously much colder state than Connecticut. They're a much more sparsely populated state than Connecticut. Delivering electricity in that state should be way more expensive than in Connecticut, not three-quarters of the price. We should, that 29.93 cents a kilowatt-hour represents just over 30% more than New Hampshire's 22.86. We are 30, over 30% more per kilowatt-hour than New Hampshire. This is purely regulatory. It's purely the crap that you're gonna see in things like Senate Bills Four. And the question, of course, when it comes to Senate Bill Four is, does this lower electric prices? Oh, I should go over, I didn't go over the entire bill, because the last four or five pages are making it near impossible to fire linemen. So we're gonna, we're gonna take your money and spend it on ridiculously expensive sources of electricity. We're gonna make cheap electricity impossible to install in this state. We're gonna make your access to that electricity, cheap electricity, virtually impossible. And then we're gonna make it virtually impossible to fire linemen. How, how does this lower electric rates? It doesn't. Senate Bill 647, however, absolutely does. And we showed the receipts. We've been through the history and logic behind that. And now you all know. So now it's time to take action. And tomorrow night on Discord, I'm gonna try, my intention is for tomorrow night to be used as a night where on Discord, we have a conversation about providing written testimony, and we go ahead and do it. And you guys can jump in and chime in with audio and video. We've done this before, it's fun. Join the Discord server. The link is in the comments and in this video's description. Check us out. Let's go to your comments, because as we do on this show, I like to review, I like to give you guys access. And that means live Q and A. And I don't see any comments in the comment section. So anyways, some sad news. Facebook announced, and I have in my message box, that Facebook is going to be deleting all live videos that are 30 days or more, by force, starting in just a few days. So all of my old videos that are on Facebook, all my old live streams are gonna be gone, and there's nothing I can do about that. So if you want to stay tuned, if you wanna be as informed, you're not gonna get a better place. You're not gonna get a better place to stay informed on this subject. Then you gotta check me out on YouTube. So folks that are watching on Facebook, I totally appreciate it. This is, you're the people I do this for. You're gonna have to start migrating to YouTube, because there's just, there's just no benefit for me to do these, do these live on Facebook, except for the people that are here in the moment. So, and my data, my analytics seem to suggest that the overwhelming majority of my viewers are watching these streams after I've, after I've done going live, after I'm done with the live stream. So unfortunately, Facebook not really helping us out there. Really not helping us out there. So we're gonna have to start migrate, folks, you're gonna have to start migrating to YouTube. And I'm gonna have some videos out on YouTube. I'm editing something right now. We're gonna start getting a lot more active very soon, so stay tuned. And again, to everyone who's stuck it out through this show tonight, thank you so much. You guys are the people I do this for. And we'll see you in the next one, which hopefully be very soon. Goodnight, everybody.